Looks like we're going to start off with the Design Review Board, Board of Adjustment. The process that we're going to use is similar to what we have used in the past. For each applicant, if they're a new applicant, will be allowed to have a few minutes to tell us why they've applied and why they would like to serve on the particular board. If it's an existing applicant, they happen to be here, sometimes they come and sometimes they don't. If they happen to be here, then they're welcome to say something if they think it will help the council make a decision. So we'll start with Design Review Board, Board of Adjustment. The incumbents, there are three seats to be filled. The incumbents are Susan Tarnetsky, Rachel Dudley, and David Ledyard. And we have a new applicant, Seth Fisher. So Mr. Fisher is here. We'll start with him.
He is not here.
Okay. So he's not going to be able to tell us why he applied. No. I don't see Susan. Rachel? Would you like to say anything or it's up to you?
No, I guess not.
You're good?
I think if anybody would like me, I may not.
Anybody have any questions for Rachel? Okay, and David Ledyard's not here. Planning and zoning, the two incumbents are Michael Faith and David Ledyard. There are two seats to be filled, there are no new applications, and neither Michael or David are here. Recreation and Public Grounds, we have Susan Fixx and Christopher Burz are the two incumbents, and there are no new applicants. So I'm looking to see, I don't think I can see anybody else who's here, so it looks like we're not going to hear from anybody. This is going to be a relatively quick process. So do you have a form you want us to use for the vote?
It tells you to...
Is it here? Okay. Do you want to pass your ballots? Passing that way to the City Clerk to get announced the results.
Okay. The appointments for Design Review Board, Board of Adjustment, Susan Tarnetsky received seven votes, Rachel Dudley received seven votes, Seth Fisher received zero votes, David Ledyard received seven votes. For planning and zoning, Michael Faith received seven votes, David Ledyard received seven votes. For Recreation and Public Grounds Commission, Susan Fixx received seven votes, and Christoph Burz received seven votes.
A nail biter. So is there a motion to appoint those individuals to the respective boards and commissions for which they applied? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right, so the appointments are made, they can be sworn in whenever they come by the city hall.
They will be sworn in before the next meeting.
All right. Okay. So that completes the business in this section, so is there a motion to adjourn? Your second? Any of those in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. The special meeting is adjourned. Now we will convene the regular City Council meeting, which was noticed to begin as soon as this meeting was finished. We're going to dispense with the pledge since we just did it. We have Mayor and Councilmember reports on current events. Ms. Mayor Watson, do you have a report?
I attended the Wyden Chase, Wyden Arts, Wyden Art Festival, which they put in Wyden Chase.
Yeah.
Putting out really nicely, well-attended, super well-attended. I wanted just to make a personal thank you to the city people who came to this thing this time. I mean, I say we want to go out on Fridays out there, maybe even as early as Wednesday to get enough spots for booths and things like that. Takes a tremendous effort on our part. We also had the opportunity, one of our vendors provided the cake there, and I had cake for our festival. So celebrating, there's one here, but this minute, and Saturday, this little bit about the early, early events, I think the earliest one that I could come up with actually happened at Litchfield, I would imagine, to see some of the buildings back in the day. So I think Mark Sciallo's was behind that, his parents, so that can feel a lot of them. But that's basically it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Rocker, you good? Council James, you have a report?
Hi.
Councilwoman Donnie, you have a report?
So, a little solemn, but I do want to bring up, we lost a beloved teacher and community member. She lived in Goodyear, but Karen Melissa in that terrible bike accident. But you know, I have to just say, we all know why we live here, and it was just confirmed, literally. They had two celebrations, one in Western Sky Middle School where she taught, and there were easily 1,000 people that attended, and it was really awesome because truly, we all reunited with people we haven't seen in 15 years in our small communities. And Goodyear, Avondale, Litchfield, Buckeye, and what we all, many of us talked about is, we all met through the school. And that school's still here, and still strong, and still awesome, but I just want to say that the confirmation of all the people that came forward, I believe that the communities, plural, have raised over $200,000 for some of the victims as well. And so, anyway, so it was on display, and really, really cool to sit and talk about the memories. And then, at the same side, school-wise, Jody Clenning, our superintendent, will be resigning and leaving in June, so they are doing a superintendent search and are very, very actively seeking stakeholders to provide information, anonymously if you wish. So if anybody wants to give feedback, they're asking people to do that. You can go online to the website and fill out, you want a superintendent that will smile, you want a superintendent that's funny, whatever. Anyway, if you feel the urge, they do have that available, so I just want to make sure you knew that. That's it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Claire?
Yeah, upcoming, we have the Historical Society's Home Tour. It's going to be on the weekend of March 25th, and that's always a good event. I think there's eight or nine homes that's going to be out there for people to review, so just anything we can do to get the word out, to get people involved, I think it's fun to go in and see the homes and see how people have remodeled and changed it, let's feel it out.
Thank you. Does Vice Mayor own the Zoom or not? Mr. Vice Mayor, do you have a report?
Yeah, thank you.
I can't see because Donnie was editing.
What's that?
Just go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I've been ill, and I wouldn't sit in the same room with me if I had a choice, so I'm not going to expose you guys. Yeah, I would ask that you turn your microphones on if you're talking. Lisa did not come through at all, Ann and Ron were very clear. I'm not sure why, but it would help the tape and help me to hear what's going on. That's all, thanks.
Thank you for your report. I don't have anything really to add. I was also at Karen's funeral, and it was quite a, it was quite a community event, which was good. Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
Mayor and Council, the report is in your binder. I welcome questions if there are any.
You have questions for the City Manager? All right. So that brings us to this meeting's response to last meeting's call of the community. There were no requests to speak on non-agenda items, so there's no response. We have a call with the community for this evening, which is an opportunity to speak on a non-agenda item. I have one request to speak, but it's on an agenda item. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on a non-agenda item? If not, then we'll move on. First item is then under the Reports section, would you fire department report? Well, maybe he doesn't know we're doing this order.
That's all I can say.
You hate to see a fireman late to the fire. All right, we'll go on to the Happy Meal Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Jonathan Wyden, here representing the Department of the Department of the City. Excuse me. I had a last month, we had two hundred, kind of all the service at the officers who are here in the city. It was a relatively quiet one. We had, minus we had a couple of DUI accidents going along, you know, here off of, excuse me, by Litchfield Streets. We had forty stops in the city, eight block alerts, and at those eight, we located three vehicles from those block alerts, and all those three vehicles had stolen license plates. And unfortunately, the owner of the vehicles didn't know that the license plate was stolen on those vehicles, so we were able to let them know and hit that switch and get them on their way. We've had forty-one community contacts, we've increased our contact with the community a lot more, some others were nice, walking around the park, broke down the businesses, getting out and saying, well, I'm doing something. Can you hear me? We've increased our speed zone details again with school, kicking back off again. We had it increased to thirty-three, and again, business checks, we've increased our business checks up to forty-two from twenty-one last month. That's pretty much all I have for you folks. Any questions?
Questions for Council? Oh, see, and thanks again for your service. Let you guys know that, guys and women know that we appreciate all the universe of the community.
Will do, sir. Appreciate it, thank you, Council.
Mr. Mayor, if I can make one comment on Lieutenant Martin?
Certainly.
So if he doesn't mind me saying so, so it's my understanding that he is no longer Lieutenant Martin, he is now Assistant Chief Martin, so we congratulate you for the first promotion.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, well now we'll go on to staff reports. Is there anyone who can report from finance?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight I have the finance report through February. We'll start with our February sales tax. Retail sales was up eight percent, our online sales were up 102 percent. Altogether, sales tax without construction, sales tax was up eighteen percent this February over last February. And then, year over year, it's up eight percent. Our construction sales tax is down forty percent over February of last year, and then in total, it's down forty-four percent. However, we're at about eighty-seven percent of our budget estimate, so we're doing better than we hadn't originally anticipated. Next slide. Oh, one more. Can you make it bigger? Our, our local tax revenue, we're at, we're at sixty-seven percent of the year right now, and our local tax revenue is at seventy-four percent, so doing much better than we had budgeted. Our state shared revenue is at sixty-five percent, however, our second state shared sales tax payment had it posted as the date, as of the date this report was prepared, so I think we're right at about sixty-seven percent. Our interest income, we have about eighteen million invested with the state's local government investment pool, and that's doing really well. We've earned just over 275,000 in interest income. So in total, our revenues are at seventy-two percent, or five percent over budget. And then our expenses, our general fund expenses, we do have a few departments that will be asking Council to move budgeted contingency to cover the overages. Council and Commission, and IT and Magistrate Court are looking like the three that will, that will need a budget adjustment that I will bring to you in June. But overall, our general fund is at fifty-seven percent, so ten percent under budget. Our general, net general fund operations, we are a positive 2.6 million, so that leaves an ending fund balance in the general fund of just under 25 million. However, I know there are some large pending invoices for Litchfield Square and the Storm Drain, Storm Drain project that are still pending, so that will go down some. You can go down two pages. Rec and Special Events detail is in your packet, I won't go through that unless anybody has any questions. You can go down. One more. Thank you. Our special revenue funds are, HERF revenue is at sixty-one percent of budget. Our budget estimate was based on what the state provided us, so it looks like our HERF revenue will come in under budget a little bit this year, probably about five percent. We have spent 477,000, and that leaves us with an ending balance of just under 1.1 million. There are some pending invoices that will be coming, that should be on next month's report. Our Litchfield Square, through the, what had posted through the end of February is about 6.4 million, so that leaves us about 2.2 million in the remaining bond funds, but as you remember, that's all been committed for, we just haven't spent, actually spent money yet. Next page. Our SLID revenue, our expenses are just over revenues, but that's because the second half of property tax collections haven't started yet, so that should balance out. Our Core Enhancement Fund has a balance right now of just, just under 82,000. Next page. So all in all, our total fund balance is just over 28 million, and 24.8 is in the general fund. And that is the end of my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Questions for Council? Looks like we're done, man. So we'll go on, thank you for your report. Go on to an update on the PGA.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Not a lot to report on for this month. The EPA and their consultants are modifying a few of the previous extraction wells that align basically about in the ballpark in the RID now, modifying those to injection wells now that the plume is receding more south, so instead of pulling water out, they're going to start injecting clean water, pushing it further away on our construction, right? That's about all that's happening right now.
Okay, any questions about the plume? Okay, thank you. Now we'll have, hear a report on special project, capital groups.
Right, you'll hear from Woody on the downtown Storm Drain and City Square. Vista Burby Drain Project is wrapped up, and the latest drainage seems to be taken care of and in good shape. The pavement replacement projects at La Casa are complete, and the invoices from the contractors, kind of what Paige referred to as coming in for, some of the projects are pulling out of the HERF funds. Upcoming CIP, Stags Park, we have the contract that's been signed, it's been, and construction is anticipated to be complete by May 1st. So we'll back that out about a month, month and a half, and we're going to start here in mid-April. Dyser and Union School Reconstruction is being reviewed by a contractor. That's the asphalt that's in some very rough shape over there, the Albertson's Corner. The project was originally budgeted for 620,000, and we increased that to 800,000, and we're hoping that the contractor comes in around that price. We have a little over a million dollars to, in the HERF fund, and this will eat up a big chunk of that. We're anticipating that project to hopefully start in May, unless we have to advertise it for construction, and we cannot pull it off the co-op contracts and do an advertising, then it'll start after the fiscal year. Another project, Jack Robinson Park, we have some parking lot drainage improvements that we're going to be doing. If anybody's been around that area, we've seen some existing HDP pipes that are over there. Public Works is going to do a majority of the work, put those pipes in the ground. That project is going to anticipate to start in April or May, I'd say, and at a cost of about $40,000. And that is all I have for the current CIP. Any questions?
Questions for Council? Okay, thank you for the reports. Special projects update, Mr. Scalp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the Council. I'll start with Litchfield Square. I recently provided a cost estimate to recover the damage caused by the February 6th accident to the risk manager and around 22,000 dollars worth. Village Parkway, the extension of Village Parkway to Desert Avenue is moving along very well. Curve gutter and sidewalk and the first foot of pavement have been completed. We're working on concrete at the intersection corners, and we've delayed that because the first pour, we had some cracking, so we're going to do a mock-up and try to figure out the best way to pour that without cracking. At the same time, the landscape company started to put down the pavers, the sidewalk pavers, and found them to be, to have defects and curves on them, so the company that made them has come and taken them all back and is producing a new set, but of course, it delays us a little bit. The median lighting in Village Parkway is underway. Landscaping is just about finished, and that short extension of Wiloma Avenue north of Village Parkway will be complete next month. The Airline Canal relocation project is complete, and all of the improvements have been turned over to the Wigwam. And we're, all of the easements and the abandonment of the existing easements have been done, and we're just waiting for the Wigwam to sign those documents and get them back to us. Southwest Gas is actively installing all of the new gas lines throughout the Litchfield Square project. You might have seen some of those big hoops of yellow pipe, that's the pipe they're pulling into the conduits and install. And we're preparing a letter to Liberty Utilities requesting that they turn over, that we turn over the water and sewer systems to them for ownership, that they would accept them. We're completing down with the construction, it's time to turn them over to Liberty for ownership. On the downtown Storm Drain Project, as I'm sure you've seen, Fairway Drive has reopened the traffic. We had one delay on the Catch Basin because of some utilities that were in the way, but all of the main line tightening and connecting piping has been installed on Fairway.
Is, the question on Fairway is, is that the paving, the pavement that's there now is what it's going to be? Are we going to...
That's the final pavement, yeah.
The final?
On the Olin Avenue, Storm Drain pipe installation is underway, moving along pretty well. We had some significant delays due to APS failing to complete their relocations in a timely fashion. We also found some water lines that weren't marked. And as you know, the street's partially closed, but it's open to residents and for Wigwam deliveries, so we're not interrupting the Wigwam truck traffic. Old Litchfield Road is the next Storm Drain Project that will start. We held our second State Polar Meeting on February 28th, went very well, there were a couple of suggestions that we're going to follow through on. We're in the process of providing flyers and handouts to businesses so that they can alert their customers to what's starting on May 20, on March 27th, and has a graphic on it to show them how to get to the businesses from the parking areas. We learned today that Liberty has canceled their water line replacement project due to cost, so on March 27th, rather than the water line starting construction, we'll be working on the Storm Drain. That will actually pick us up about three weeks in the schedule. And the other thing that means is that we will not be disrupting the Wigwam, Old Litchfield Road intersection because of those, the water line isn't going to be built for this time. And the Storm Drain starts just north of Wigwam, so that intersection will not be disrupted. But northbound traffic on Old Litchfield Road will now have to be diverted around Desert and back to Honeysuckle and North Lawn. And we've got, we've been providing traffic control plans to the businesses as a part of those handouts. That's all I have, Mayor.
Just a quick question, is the, the area that's in front of the businesses on Old Litchfield Road is not going to be two-way, two-way on one side?
It depends on the phase. So in the first phase, we're installing Storm Drain from Wigwam to Honeysuckle, so there would be no traffic, northbound traffic on Honeysuckle, but they go around Desert, Honeysuckle, I'm sorry, I'm Old Litchfield Road. They go around Desert and Honeysuckle and back to northbound, Old Litchfield Road. In the second phase, we're installing between Honeysuckle and Fairway. In that case, the northbound traffic will be, will come off of Wigwam, be diverted over to the west side of the street, and then north to Fairway. So we'll have two-way traffic on the west side of the street.
Any other questions from Council? Councilwoman Rocker?
Woody, how, I haven't heard your report, or I'm not sure whether you're involved in the golf cart underpass and the some pump or the drainage for that? Is that, your head on that, or?
Yeah, yeah, I'm handling that. That's a part of the Storm Drain Project.
Okay.
So they're in the process, Safe and Gardeners is in the process right now of acquiring the pump station and the controls and, you know, all that that go with it. I don't know the exact schedule when that'll go in, but we've still got three or four months before this project will be finished.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Council? Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. My fire, my fireman planned for you to show up, so we're going to take him out of order. Sorry about that. Well, we're just so glad it wasn't real fire.
I was trying to anticipate immediately following, so I guess I was...
Lisa, aren't you?
I was off. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Paul Louizie, Fire Chief for the City of Indian Territory Department. Just to review the calls for service for the month of February, we had 57 calls for service, 53 of those, or 93% were for EMS. And then we continue to track on a, on a monthly basis, the calls for service in the care facilities as well. So nothing for me kind of stands out as anything that's an outlier for us, but we do continue to have those conversations with the care homes.
Okay.
Any questions from Council?
Well, thanks for coming in.
Yeah. Next you're a copy, and we get you right to the top of the agenda, so.
No problem, we always have our firemen. Thank you, thank you guys for, for the service in your area, you do a great job.
And I do have one quick announcement. We'll be undergoing some renovations at that fire station, Fire Station 183, so you will see a construction trailer. The guys will still be on site in the construction trailer, living there until the renovations are done, so we, we felt it was really important to keep that, that crew there at the station to be able to respond to Litchfield Park and our surrounding areas, so they will be still on site, but we'll be undergoing constructions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, item number eight. Is there anyone in the Council who wishes to take anything off of the consent agenda, item A through H?
I can ask a question, verification, we've got to just pick it up.
If, if, we can't have a discussion about it if you want to, so it's easier a lot of times just to take it off.
Take it off, we can talk about it.
We'll get it as soon as we get, it's the first, it'll be the first item that we consider after we do the consent.
I asked the consent agenda, I have to get it off.
E, all right. So anyone else wish to have any item improvement in the consent agenda? Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda? Is there a motion to pass the consent agenda, items A through H, with the exception of E? And those favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so those, those items pass, now we'll consider item 8E. And you have any question about?
I was just wondering if you could jump in and talk a little bit more about what's going on there. I think.
Councilmember James, you're regarding the Monument Point plant, is that correct? I'll actually refer this one to Keith, he's more familiar with this one. Keith, if you don't mind.
Vice Mayor, at all. So over at Monument Point, there are three lots on the south side of the recently constructed storage facility that are owned by the same entity and it was to combine all three lots in one. The intention is an athletic facility. The preliminary site plan that we do have for it generally shows a, I don't know if I'm correct or wrong, but it's almost 32,000 square foot building with multiple outdoor volleyball, sand volleyball, tennis courts, kind of throughout the combined lot.
Any other questions?
So, I, I said, so you said the majority of that is the storage facility?
The storage facility is north of it, so these are the three lots to the south.
And it's residential behind that?
Well, there's, so the storage facility, vacant lots, Esper, Tarot.
Stereolane.
Stereolane, additional row of vacant lots and then the residential, so that's our residential.
And that was rezoned, mixed use, but the intent now is just completely commercial, is that? And, and, and so the asking this is just to go from combining three lots for the intent of what looks like a gym, and I'm around.
Athletic facility, yeah, so there, there not, there's no intent to change the zoning. The, the intended use falls within the existing zone. And if you have any more of a zoning question, bring that over here on that, but did I say that correctly?
And it's all open, nothing under roof?
There will be, from our understanding, again, we only provide a preliminary site plan to review against what's proposed, but it looks like it is an enclosed athletic facility. The 32,000 square foot facility will be a building of some kind.
Which is within the current building.
Yeah, and planning reviewed it, all setbacks, the coverage of the lot after the three lots are combined, it's a single final lot, it'll meet the minimum of max use.
Just go, just roll back.
I may, Mike Van Darke takes a lot of volleyball around, it's all over the lot, the valley. And when you get into some of those places, there's a work problem. And so if this is a volleyball facility for club volleyball or something like that, I would hope that you would consider the parking that's needed to support it on operation.
Yeah, the intent, so the city does have a pretty robust parking density calculation. This will be slightly unique facility, but we will apply that same philosophy with the parking requirements. The preliminary site plan did show what we feel is sufficient parking, but again, that wasn't an official package that would normally go to like DRB. But from the densities we could calculate, it looked like they had quite, quite a few parking spaces in that athletic facility.
Assuming we look at.
Absolutely.
Okay, any other questions for council? Is there a motion to approve the replat of Monument Point lots 5, 4, and 21, to combine them into one lot? Is there any discussion? All those favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, voting carries, number one to the normal business agenda. Number 9A. 9A, I've had a request to speak from Mr. Zink.
Call.
Yep. So, Mr. Alt.
Thank you.
The board of commissioners.
I'm sure you'll be relieved to hear that I'm going to really curtail my comments this evening. I cut my throat, many people have threatened to cut it, so I just wanted to thank the council, all the boards and commissions, the staff of Litfield and everybody else that's been involved in this process for the zoning amendment up to this point in time, for all their diligence and all their hard work and getting us to this point. Thank you very much.
Okay, so is there a presentation, Mr. Frog?
Evening, Mayor and Council. John Froch, one of your planning consultants. So I was here last month when we introduced the ordinance and we did have a number of speakers last month. We appreciate the citizen input. There's a number of slides I'm not going to go through tonight just because we've, thanks to City Attorney Estes, where I think we boiled things down to what council direction was last month, so if we don't mind flipping to the next slide. So we've been working on this roughly for about 18 months and trying to work with our neighborhood groups regarding the screening of RVs, recreational vehicles, basically in residential neighborhoods. We do regulate parking as commonly referred to as non-principle uses in section 31.04 of zoning code, this would be an amendment to our zoning laws. There was a little bit of interpretation, I won't go into that anyway. Brief, brief counsel last month on that. We did look at three options leading up to tonight that we had at the planning commission last fall. Next slide, please. This gets into a lot of detail on the section of the zoning codes that exist today. And so basically it does require RVs to be screened in some fashion, so we're, the ordinance that is part of the packet is what we're suggesting we adopt it tonight. You had the first reading last month, the third edition. Next slide, please. We had planning zoning commission action last fall before I arrived to help out with planning zoning. There was a hearing back in September that the item then was tabled and then it came back to P and Z on October 11th. And the option at that time, a few months ago, was to look at option one of our, of the three options that were proposed. Next slide, please. There was some word adjustment action that I discussed last, last month when I was before you. I won't go into all that. Basically, we're looking for the citizen input as part of our planning zoning process, so I think we're good tonight with hopefully a proposal that meets all of our needs here in Litfield Park. Next slide, please. I mentioned we had the first reading of the ordinance. Mayor and Council had a little bit of, some suggestions on some amendments to the ordinance. We've gone back, did a little bit of cleanup on the ordinance, again, it's part of your packet, so tonight will be the second reading of the ordinance and then the staff recommendations that you adopt the revised coverage of S found in the ordinance tonight, and that we have to answer the questions.
Questions for council?
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
He's muted and working for.
What's that?
I'm sorry, there we go. I'm a little confused, the speaker was quite garbled, but the, on page 148 of our packet, we have suggested language that includes setbacks. And in the ordinance on 151, there are no setbacks suggested. What, what happened to setbacks?
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Vice Mayor, that was discussed at the last meeting and the discussion was that if the, if the items are to be 100% screened, then there would be no need to do a measurement for setbacks, and in fact, that would cause, I think, more enforcement issues for having to get permission to get on property, to do measurements and stuff. But if the requirement is that all these items have to be fully screened, 100% screened from view, then there would be no need to have any setback determination whether how far they were or were not from the, the side or rear property line.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Vice Mayor?
We keep losing his speed.
Yeah, another question, Mr. Vice Mayor.
We keep losing his speed.
We're losing him?
His sound.
So if I could just point out, this essentially makes it much easier for code enforcement because if the RV is visible, then it violates this provision. The code enforcement.
Problem.
Yeah, the, the code enforcement officer that doesn't have to get permission or go get an administrative warrant to go onto the property to do a measurement, to see how far it is setback or whatever.
That makes sense. But we want to get our communication reestablished with Vice Mayor, if that's the answer.
John, one of the slides had the wording from the ordinance, correct?
Yes, I believe if we get it answered, I believe it's the next slide.
If we can go to the next slide, guys. Just so everyone can see that, the Vice Mayor can see it as well. That is the new wording you see there in paragraph number one, that what we're discussing there, you see the structure sentence. It used to say that it had to be six foot away for, no, two feet for every six feet of height?
Yeah, items that were more than six feet in height had to be set back a minimum of two feet for every foot of height from any side or rear property line. And so the, the initial issue was is, was that measurement of that two feet setback, did that start at the six foot mark of where you could actually see the RV, or did that go from grade? And so the recommendation was that, no, it was measured from grade, but then the, the thought process was, well, there's no reason to measure it at all if you're going to require 100% screening, whether that's 100% screening by a six foot wall, if the RV or trailer sits less than six feet, or by dense landscaping, as long as it's 100% screened, then you really wouldn't need to get into a calculation of a setback.
It eliminates confusion, so. Vice Mayor. Mr. Vice Mayor. Thank you. I, I don't remember, I, I'm getting this sound back, is it echoing now? Well, why don't you turn this phone off? All right, go ahead. There you go.
Okay. I, I, I didn't hear all of what Joe said because the sound let's out in our wonderful system, but I don't agree with having no setbacks. There's a reason in the fire code, I mean, for setbacks, part of the reason is the fire code. You've got two, two houses 10 feet apart, you squeeze two 14-foot RVs in that 10 foot on each side, you've lost any kind of fire break between those two houses if one of the houses or the RVs catch fire. I, I, I don't, I never heard anywhere that we were getting away from doing this setback thing. And I think the setback thing in the old code was a good idea.
Mr. Vice Mayor, that was a discussion at the last meeting. I went through and, and re-reviewed the, the video and that was discussed because the, the issue being is, is this makes it a lot easier for code enforcement because in order to do a measurement or a setback, you have to get permission to go onto the property and if you don't have permission, you have to get an administrative warrant to go and do that measurement. And if the, if the RVs have to be fully screened, then there would be no need for that setback. I understand the, the possible concern with regard to, you know, access for, for fire and, and safety like that, but we have no other requirements, if they have anything stored on the backside of their wall, that there has to be any type of, of setback for fire access. This was always, this section was always, in my understanding, was always a, was always a visual issue, it was always whether they, the community wanted to allow for or see RVs parked on the side of, of yards. And the, the removal of the, of the setback measurement requirement makes it a lot easier for code enforcement because if they can see the RV, it's in violation and they can write that up without having to go onto property at all.
Why, why can't they use a laser measurement in a neighboring property, he's complaining?
If you, if you are granted access, you'd have to get, be granted access from a neighboring property. It then, it just becomes an issue of proof, you know, because you're, you're looking at civil penalties and then potential criminal penalties for multiple violations, you know, you're going to have to, to validate the, the calculation and measurement of a, of a laser. It's just, in my opinion, it makes it a lot easier if you don't have that requirement.
I, I don't, I don't care about easy on the prosecutor or the code enforcement. I care about the citizens and attempting to, to protect them, and I see this going the wrong direction because I think the direction the staff was to tighten it up. And the way we're going with this is to loosen it up.
I don't agree that this is boosting anything up. This, this makes it clear that you have to completely screen the RVs and in the past, that's not the truth. You run around the park and you can see RVs everywhere. They're, they're, the, the old, the old wording did not do what it was intended to do. So I, and I, I don't, I think it's a good idea to keep it as simple as we can, makes it simple for the code enforcement officer to write up a, you know, write up a notice of violation without getting into, and trying to measure and figure out exactly how far from the wall this, this unit's supposed to be. So I, I, I don't agree with, with your, with your concern about it. I think that this is. Do you have further comments or do we have other comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor, do you mind?
Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I would tell you a few interesting examples we've had. Can you hear me okay, sir?
Yes.
Okay. On the whole six foot thing. So it gets complicated. We talked about the code enforcement officer. So a few examples that have actually happened. We had citizens that would flatten the air on their, let the air in their tires, so their RVs were lower. We had that issue. Our code enforcement person goes out, tires are flat, the RV's lower, the next day they pump them back up. That actually happened. We had other issues arguing about how high is the AC on top of the RV? Do we measure it from the roof of the RV? Do we measure it from the AC unit? The, the six foot thing made it very complicated. I had different issues as far as how the six foot thing, if it was measured, as Joe said, is, is it from the ground, is it from six feet? And I, I would agree, I think that making it, just saying completely screened makes it much more clear versus the distance, because the distance things did cause a lot of issues just with residents arguing, arguing with staff, people modifying their campers to try to skirt this. I, I think that making it completely screened simplifies that, just in my opinion, sir. But I just want to give you those two examples because that's stuff we've actually encountered the last year over this ordinance. I don't know if that helps any, but just thought you should know.
Any further questions for council? Okay, if not, is there any, see what, we've got adoption. We want to make sure that we're not having any, any other issues with public hearings or whatever we don't. So we have, is there a motion to adopt ordinance 23-266 for the screening of non-principle uses exempt? Is there a second? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
Do a roll for the adoption of the ordinance, we have this new rule. So, Mr. City Clerk, if you'd please call roll.
Councilmember Donahue.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Fay.
Nay.
Councilmember Brandon Watson.
Aye.
Councilmember Claire.
Aye.
Councilmember Romack.
Aye.
Councilmember James.
Yea.
Mayor Shaw.
Aye.
Aye.
They voted six-one in favor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Can I just go on the record to say that I voted nay, because I think it didn't far enough, not that I was against this screening, and I'd like to have the input of the Fire Marshal?
We can ask the Fire Marshal for input and bring it back at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Uh-huh. All right, so then we'll go on to item B, item B, which is a public hearing, open public hearing on the proposed text amendment to Section thirty-six point zero-two, location of wireless communication facilities. Mr. Froch, do you have a report?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the first reading of another text amendment that we're proposing. This is regarding wireless communication facilities, or WCFs, typically known as monopoles, wireless facilities, antennas, et cetera. Next slide, please. Towards the end of last year, we encountered a gap in our zoning code, and it pertains to Section thirty-six point oh-two. The actual title of that section is wireless communications facilities. And so that section talks about where in Litchfield Park can wireless facilities locate, and we noticed that our one industrial district, which is Monument Point, that was the subject of the project that Keith just presented, over on Kennelback Road on the west side of El Mirage, is some industrial, and we don't allow wireless facilities in industrial. And so we're suggesting to Mayor and Council that we change this section of the ordinance to allow the industrial zoning district to accept wireless facilities. Next slide, please. I don't know if I figured that arrow of the city or not, so I apologize for that. Right now, in Litchfield Park where wireless facilities can locate are a number of different zoning districts, the resort district, or RT, neighborhood commercial, NC, and then R2 commercial district, community commercial, CS, and then industrial commercial, RS. We did introduce the text amendment to Plan and Zoning Commission last fall on the tenth. Next slide, please. They asked us, apologies for that, they asked us to go ahead and begin work on the ordinance amendment, which we've been doing. This is the actual code section in thirty-six point oh-two. So, basically what we're asking Council tonight is to have the initial reading of the ordinance, and then allow us to have the industrial zoning district as a place where wireless facilities can locate. Next slide, please. I've already covered this, the industrial or the high district would be one additional opportunity for wireless sector to locate in Litchfield Park. Next slide, please. I mentioned the initial review by P and Z back in November. At that time, they asked staff to go ahead and proceed, and then just a month ago, we went back to P and Z and presented the item, and on a six to zero vote, Vice Chair Faith was absent. P and Z recommended approval of adding the industrial district as a place for wireless, so that was the recommendation from P and Z, and then again, tonight would be the first reading of the ordinance relative to this text amendment, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions from Council, first up?
Vice Mayor?
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I apologize for being a pain tonight, guys. A number of years ago, we were told by our staff that we had to allow 5G cell towers in our residential neighborhoods located on light poles that were not on property we own, but in public utility easements. We're being told that now that we have nothing, we have nothing in our code that allows these WCFs in our residential neighborhoods. I don't understand what happened.
Our staff wants to make a response. So, there's a change in state law that I think was bumped in by federal law for the installation of some new technology for 5G that I don't know that it's ever gone anywhere, so I don't know of a situation where we've been asked to install that type of technology. This change is really speaking of a different problem than that.
I would agree, this change is regarding allowing cellphone towers in the industrial area, because we've had a request to put one there, most cities do allow it. As far as the 5G thing goes, that may be before me, I don't remember that, to be honest. Joe, do you know anything about that?
It wasn't before you, yeah.
It was before Joe also.
And probably before me, but I think I can kind of answer that, because there are differences between just your basic wireless communication facilities, which are typically your normal cell tower facilities, which have large towers, they have...
It's like our, we have one.
Right, they've got the backup generators, the whole facilities, and the micro 5G facilities that are attached to, excuse me, to light poles and other infrastructure, and there are separate state regulations and even federal regulations with regard to those micro 5G facilities. This is just with regard to regular wireless communication facilities, regular cell towers.
We have a section of our code that covers those micro facilities. It could be a subsection of this section, but it's not, it is not this part of it which really deals only with the monopoles and big home trees like the other from the Hilltop. Long time ago, we discussed the, the micro, little micro deals.
Well, Vice Mayor, I remember that conversation too.
We spent one time. They still might be crazy.
No, not here.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Any further questions, Mr. Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Okay, is there, are there, are there any public comments? Okay, seeing all the comments, we're going to close the public hearings, and we'll go on to the question of introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two-six-seven to prevent wireless communication facilities in industrial areas. Is there someone who would move to introduce? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two-six-seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so if the ordinance is introduced, then we'll consider the final adoption next meeting. Next item on the agenda is a consideration or information only of the Sun Health Police Agreement. Mr. Williams, do you have a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have a presentation on this item, I would recommend we discuss this in executive session. Before we do that, I did want to recognize, we do have Rich Newman here with us tonight. He's actually working with the Hilltop Project for Sun Health. He is here if we had any questions with him as far as Sun Health goes, but again, I would recommend we discuss the agreement in executive session, sir.
Is there a motion to go into executive session under item ten A?
Angie Schaefer is here and arrived before the seven o'clock meeting, so I thought she was going to present.
She may have, she's not on the agenda.
No, I'm going to go on next month.
Oh, I thought you were on.
Yeah, thank you very much.
We're always happy to see you, though.
Oh, thank you, thank you. I realized I'm a little late, usually we start at seven, so I apologize.
It was immediately following a special session, so flexible. Okay, is there a motion to go under, to go into executive session under item ten A of our agenda? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're going to move to executive session, when we come out of executive session, we won't be discussing, certainly will not be taking any further action. I'm not sure that there will be a question from the council, but maybe the Sun Health's representative, if you want to stick around, welcome to do that. If you have any questions that end up being generated, you know, from the process, we'll look at what they can give you for answer either, you know, anyway, so that's up to you. Okay.